Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the library board of trustees. All members of the board are present. And I don't believe there's any one in the audience that's not an employee, so we will not have to worry about our own communications. Approval of the minutes of the June 20th meeting, the minutes that Zach gave to Dara, and it came out to you, an email, or any additions or corrections? Okay, they will be filed as read. Current business.
Motion to...
Yeah, we do need it, I'm sorry, yes. It was moved by Swab, seconded by Gorney. All those in favor?
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you. Under current business, trustee Clemmons, library visit recap. Carolyn?
Great, so I had the privilege of going over to the library, I think that was on June 29th, and I was toured through the library by Katie and Dara. And I think I just wanted to speak about three things that I saw. So the first one was an incident with an individual who would've gone through the ranger process. He was not doing too well, and I just wanted to commend the staff and how they handled it. It was a situation where someone came in and said that they may have taken their medication wrong, and weren't feeling very well, I would say. But the staff handled it extremely professionally. They followed the procedures that have been put in place, and while there wasn't a ranger available, they did call dispatch. And I got to see kind of what they go through, and I don't think anywhere is it written down that that's one of their job duties, but they handled it with such grace, and I just really wanted to say, great job. I think that's a great asset to have at the library. The second thing that I wanted to talk about, and this might be something that we can discuss in the future, but one of the things that came up is that the contract value for LSNS, the salary amount stays the same over the course of the contract. So 10 years, there's no salary adjustment? There's no salary increase? Up right?
Actually, there is a 3% overall increase in the budget on an annual basis.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, then I misunderstood that.
Not a... No, I was, I may have been, I may not have understood that at that point.
Okay. Okay, great, so you guys...
We do have, yes, it is, there is a increased premium overall budget, but it's not specifically.
Okay.
What does not, does not have any increase in the contract is the $250,000 for materials annually. There's no cost of living for that.
And then, the third thing I wanted to discuss or talk about was the shift to Polaris, and if that is going to impact the way that we're able to collect fees. So, I don't know if there's been any investigation into that, but will we need to update those systems? The...
Self-checkout machines.
Right.
Yeah, so, my name is Katie, and I'm the senior librarian of technical services, and I'm overseeing the Polaris migration. When I speak later during the conference notes time, I do have some feedback on Polaris. I did get clarification that our iOS organization coordinator says it shouldn't be a problem to continue charging fees using their system. It is something we would have to test with the self-checkout machines, if we're not able to do it at this time, we have to wait till we have more entries or run them running. But she says that she's spoken to their project management, and maybe we should study to do that, because I happen to have a colleague that's in the background.
Okay, great, thank you. That concludes my report on my trip.
Since Katie's here, can I ask her a question?
Oh, yes.
Katie, when we visited about a month and a half ago, I guess it was, you had, we're looking at data on potentially moving one of the self-checkout machines upstairs because of the heavy usage on the only one upstairs versus the four downstairs. Just curious how that went.
I...
Yes?
I don't think it's important, but I think it'd be your recorded session, so if you might want to speak...
Could be helpful if you could speak.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you use a microphone?
Okay.
Okay, so the question was about the self-checkout machine that I was moving upstairs into youth services. I had discussed that with the senior librarian of youth services. Right now, we are commencing our annual summer reading program, and I think we tabled that to discuss after we got Polaris up and running, because it's gonna have some maneuvering we're gonna have to do with some of their display space. We're also gonna have to look at possibly paying for wiring for the data ports, because we do have credit card machines which use a very specialized secure data port, and there's certain reliance issues. So depending on how the building is wired, I'm not sure. I believe we can do it, and I wanted to make sure that he's on board moving it up there, but we have to kind of look at placement and make sure that that's something that is easily possible.
Okay, thanks for the update.
Yeah, that was the summer reading program you were talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe the trustees or three trustees are aware that that's an outstanding program, and the number of people who are going to go for it, for any reason you have a chance to do it, it's really worthwhile. It's quite a program.
Okay, our second item under current business is a motion to move our October, our August 8th meeting to August 15th. And before we listen to Carolyn, Zach, is that possible?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Carolyn.
So, I have a work trip coming up, which was very last week, and I'll be out of town, so I was hoping that we could switch the date to just one week later.
Is that a problem for any of the trustees? We'll need a motion, please?
Hold on for a minute, please.
Okay.
And that would be for August 15th?
Okay, it seems to not be a problem, so Carolyn, would you like to make that motion?
Sure will.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Clemmons, seconded by Swab, to move our meeting to August 15th. All those, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is the DV DVD rental cost is further researched needed. Is that yours, Dara?
It's mine.
John's, and then I'll have a re...
Okay.
Okay, well, I, you know, we've addressed books on CD, and we'll wait to hear back from the city manager on that. But we had the smaller libraries, of which we're one in the little survey I did, had half of them, roughly, I think it was six, seven of 13, or six out of 13, whatever it was, had varying charges for DVDs, of which we're one of those. Is that worth pursuing in depth to see how we compare to the rest, you know, as far as the money, et cetera? Or can we just, you know, do we want to look at that deeply, in greater depth, or not? And I guess we do.
And I have some developing news. First of all, thank you very much for getting the letter in, and the city manager's going to approve or approve our 50 cent removal on the books on CDs.
Great.
So that's wonderful. What he has requested, and I will be talking to him when he gets back from vacation, but I don't have a firm date yet, for the DVDs, he has kind of come up with the idea, and I actually think it's a good one, of having a special card that you can purchase. So you could purchase the card, and for the first year, that card goes fine free. There are no details hammered down on this, but the idea is to kind of come up with something to offset getting rid of this DVD charge.
Okay.
This was his idea, and I'm certainly not opposed, so we'll...
No, it's worth exploring. As long as we don't get rid of those fees and those penalties, that's the revenue that I think we want to keep.
Right, I think we would be keeping that, but we're looking at getting rid of that 50 cent on the DVD. But one victory, I thank you very much for your work on the book on CDs.
Well, I wouldn't have done anything if staff hadn't brought it to my attention, so thank you for doing that.
Question. Clarification from me. When we collect these, those are, that are received from public, does that money go to the city of Escondido, or does it come back to the city?
It goes into the city's general fund.
Yes, it hasn't been passed.
And I checked with the county, and also, all of the fees and overdue penalties that the county collects also goes into the county general. And their librarians hate it as much as we do. So, Dara, will your office be doing the research, or...
I guess I wouldn't call it research at this point, it's more or less working with the city to see if we could kind of find a meet-in-the-middle solution. Of course, the library would say, let's just get rid of the DVD cost, and this is an attempt to maybe find a way to offset that and meet in the middle, so that the immediate deduction isn't quite as much of a hit by insurance.
So you will put this back on the agenda as soon as you get more information?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's any wig work or help I can provide, let me know.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments on the DVD rental costs? Our next item is, does the board want fines and fee statistics included in the monthly
My thought was that seeing it every month is probably more than we need, but maybe seeing it on a less frequent basis would be good.
Katie, since you do the, since you do the sheet, and you do, and you've improved it so much, we appreciate that, all your hard work.
Is it, that's a good...
Could we do it?
Is this gonna be a manual effort on your part?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask.
So the request would be to have the breakdown of the revenue that we make from both our fines, which are the overdue loss, et cetera, and then our rental fees, which are now only going to be pretty much DVDs and music CDs. I take those statistics weekly, and by the end of the month, I have a spreadsheet for the month that has that breakdown. Those numbers are already being taken, and I could easily provide them, just as another line item on your statistics spreadsheet that I provide monthly for you. So that's no extra effort on my part.
That's what we wanted to hear.
So would it be easier for you to include it every single month versus...
Yeah.
Just automatic that way?
It becomes part of my workflow, it's just an extra line that I have into the spreadsheet.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to suggest that if the board would like to approve this, we do it with a motion, please. It's been moved by Clemmons to include the fines and fee statistics on a monthly basis in our statistics sheet by Clemmons, and it's been seconded by Gorney. All those in favor?
Motion approved, five zero.
Number six, the agenda item, is understanding the 80/20 ordering process.
John, I believe that's yours. It's mine, but Dara gave me, or gave us, a very good blog that was posted by another, I guess it's from the home office of LSNS, the collection team management, collection management team, and am I the only one that has a copy of that?
Yes, you are.
Whoops.
I'm sorry. I can certainly share that with everyone and email it out.
Well, I just have one question on it, Dara. Towards the bottom, if you go to the fourth paragraph where a lot of it's inset, at the very, next to the bottom, it says, "A holds management service that handles buying additional copies when your ratios get out of whack." Okay, I know what "out of whack" means, but what's the denominator and the denominator, numerator and denominator on the ratio, and what's the normal range?
Without being... It would just depend, what does she refer?
Well, on how many copies they should buy of any particular book.
So, for instance, if we have a... Okay, sorry.
I like the technical stuff, "out of whack."
Out of whack. Okay, so the 80/20 is the collection management, it would be for our LSNS corporate team to spend 80% of our budget ordering those things that we need for the collections, such as the bestsellers and all that, and 20% of our budget would be reserved for our staff in-house to use to purchase more niche items, or things specific to a program, et cetera, specifically talking about collection materials. The question was the ratio for holds, which is what she's talking about, hold ratios getting out of whack. So when you place a reserve on an item, Escondido Public Library's goal is to have a five-to-one ratio, which means that for every five holds placed on an item, we have one copy of the item. So for example, if you were to have 10 holds, we would have two copies. Does that make sense? And we try very hard to keep that. However, sometimes, depending on backwards, or something just blows out as being super popular for, you know, some random reason, it can be a little bit more tricky to stay on top of those ratios. So part of this 80/20 is for them to help us to manage those ratios.
Just out of curiosity, if five's the, your goal, when do you consider it, quote, "out of whack," unquote? Like eight, five, .5, six?
Well, it depends. That would be something, depending on the area, the subject area, it would depend on whether it's a youth item, an adult item, it would depend on the kinds of different items.
So this is beginning to sound like classic inventory planning problems.
Pretty much, yeah.
Where's your skill at the operator?
We try really hard to stay five-to-one, so, and we know, like, for example, the new Stephen King book comes out, we try and predict, okay, we know that's a popular author, we know we usually have long waiting lists, we'll probably start out purchasing maybe five copies. But there are times where something isn't a bestseller that you predict, and you end up with five copies and no one waited for it. So it's, there's a lot of really cool analytics that LSNS is coming up with to help you predict that, and also for them to be, like, they get reports directly from Polaris on ordering, which is really exciting that we're going to that program, because they'll be able to kind of anticipate that a lot better than we've been able to previously. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Any other questions on the 80/20? The library director's report, please.
So since this is delivered in two parts, I've decided, selected today that I wanted to give you some updates on staff, give them a chance to tell you about some of the things they have going on, and then in the second part, I'll talk to some of the points that we're focusing on. So first off, I would like to introduce everyone to Azar Katusian. She is our new adult services librarian, or the head of the adult services department. So she, would you like to start?
Okay.
And she's gonna tell you a little about herself and some of the programs she's been working on.
Very good, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, and my name is Olaf Katsia, and I'm very happy and proud that I'm speaking with all of you today. And I'm honored to be working with a little of our library team from 2013, and I brought my, my more than twenty-two years experience to this library, to work with this team, and I'm a proud of this team, because we all are working together very, very good, and I'm very happy that we are doing a very nice team working. In the past, I was responsible for many different departments, I was working at cataloging department, I was the manager of the administration department department, and managing the research department, I was working at reference department, and I was working in indexing department. So with this experience, I'm here, and I'm very happy that recently I started my work as an adult services, senior librarian, adult services librarian. At the library, I would like to talk a lot, maybe to cover our program and our activity in the library and adult services. We do have different programs in the library for adults. We have a library program, and we, in adult services department, in addition to the collection department, that we are working on books, audio books, book on CD, e-audio book, ebook, magazines, and data systems, we are working on and doing the collection department. And we are making our collection, we are doing the listening, to the bidding, we're collaborating with customer service, we're doing the bidding, and taking care of the collection to have a update, and, you know, and the collection to meet our veterans. Also, we have providing interlibrary knowledge program and reference services, so we are in our research, in addition to all our different questions that our patrons have, our patrons have, and our computer questions, or reference questions, we're helping them to find and find and use them, or ask for, using the electronic tool, they are, they bring the devices to the library, and we are helping them, and we are learning what is our patron doing on this. So we're providing different lawyers, different information for them, for the next time that they order, they have a lawyer, they have a book mark, and they have different things that can help them to do their business. And we do have, we run two book clubs, so two book clubs, one unit, and the other one in Spanish, and we are planning for another one, we are working on it, we are trying to reach it, because we're helping one culture center to use to have this program. I will mention it in the next set. And we do have a running graphic normal book club, so plus the two book clubs, we run the graphic normal book club. And we do have a book club in a bag, and we have 60 bags for adults, that they are able to check out their bags, and have their own book club. So we do have the lawyer, we update all the bags, and we are rebranding the bags, and we have a plan to bring that out to all of our patrons, see that, after our rebranding it, and they are able to check out the books, and try to do two different activities. One is taking care of our patrons, we have the book club in the bags, and the other one in the, through the economic side of the book club, is that if we buy a lot of books, because some of the books are very popular, and therefore responding to our patrons, we buy more than five copies at eighty's mission, we might have a lot of books in our stacks, so we put a part of them in the bag, so we are helping our patrons to check out the books, the popular books for the book club, and the other side, we are taking care of the stacks to have more for our new books. And we have a monthly two meeting for writers' book, so we run a writer's book meeting monthly, they do have two meetings, and they are, they come over there, gathering the books, and we did have a concept competition this year for encouraging our writers, so they, two of them, they want a prize, and we are encouraging them to be in the library, and trying to touch the different people who are in the library, who are local authors, who, to gather more professional patrons and people in the library. And we do have a monthly concert for our patrons to have fun and enjoy the library, because we have a library, library mission, and we are going to entertain and train, and so everything is together, too. So we do have a monthly concert. These programs are the programs that the adult services is running in the library for patrons. We do have outreach programs that, I am very happy that the passion of teamwork in all departments is very, works minutes, and in the library, and we are working together very well. So in all of the outreach programs that the library has, in children's department or adult department, adult services try to participate in many of them, and I'm happy to mention and highlight that I was able to, to have two, two, two good events, and very successful events in the library, that they are all of the IBS operators, and we have carrier fair and wellness fair. So with the wellness fair, we did have seventeen vendors that there, I met vendors in, in outreach that I was there. I met more than thirty vendors, and we had seventeen in the library, and we had eighty-one, eighty-five attendees to that carrier, to that wellness fair. And we also had the carrier fair recently, and it was, we had fourteen vendors for the carrier fair, and ninety-six participants and applicants to apply for a job. So it was a very successful program. We received very good feedback with the participants and with the vendors from them, and we are going to have more health and carrier and job programs at the library. Also, we tried to make our more operations prepared, so we did have, before our carrier fair, we had a resident workshop, so to prepare our patrons to have a good participant in the carrier fair. Plus, all of these programs, we are participating in different outreaches, such as grandparent based children, the North family, the company, or Indian who can find it, best of all, all the different programs, lunch hour, dinner night, or different programs that the school district has. We, from the adult, adult services, there was some staff over there to... We found that adult services, there was some staff over there to promote the library services and the staff in the adult services, to the parents, to the people who were there. And educator night, tall and rock, grand festival, grand annual festival. And I would like to mention that we had a outreach for craft carrier, where they improve the grand. So we try to promote our program for the people who are over in the grand area. And on top of this outreach, we do have a very, very fantastic program that we call the Read Local Shop Local. And Read Local Shop Local, we change and hold the local library, local businesses with the library and the community needs. I would like to introduce this program. This program is working between the library and the local businesses. And I would like to let you know that it is limited of our activity and I'm part of just all of the San Diego area. So I first started with working and talking, collaborating with partners from the San Diego. And we talked with the part of local businesses. They are providing some discounts to the library patrons if they show their library card. And they will get a benefit for their tax or for being advertised, their information, their logo and their address on our website, on our homepage. And our social media, every new patron who is in the library, we provide a brochure for them. We do create posters for these businesses. So it's kind of to cite a test. It has benefited for the library because we are in track with the different partner. And they have benefited from the library patrons. And the library is providing very good services for patrons. I would like to let you know that it was, we started, it is highly started with thirteen partners. And right now, there are around twenty-two partners. And I would like to bring you some of the brochure. And we do monthly visit with all of these partners. And we talk with them, we chat with them. In many of our programs, we are able to ask them to participate. For example, in for summer reading challenge, we have, we had bought some more as a treat for the people who registered for the summer reading. And we added a different range of the businesses. Fun and activity, you have, there are museums, tutoring centers that you are able to, for example, the museum of San Francisco, you are able to provide more services to the library patrons and not just for the first registration, but in other side. They are able to do that. And we talk in Persian Cultural Center. We are going to have more bilingual programs at the library with this partner. And we are not limited in San Diego. So we are working with, we do have partners from Hula, we do have partners from Vistal, this Persian Cultural Center in San Diego. So we do have the map in the back of the brochure. And every new patron who is in the library, we provide and promote this brochure to them and explain our activity and our services. And we plan to expand recently, just last month, we added three businesses to this brochure, to this program. And we are very happy and hopeful to have more partners in this program from all of San Diego. And plus of all of these programs for our patrons, we are caring of our library and our staff and our colleagues. So we try to have more training. So we had a training for our database of, on two of our databases for staff. And we are going to have, we plan to have training for security cameras for staff. And we talk with a company that we are going to provide our virtual dimensional program for the staff to learn more about the dimensional and so as staff know how to deal with this. And we do have, we are, we plan for more outreach programs. And we are going to have more programs in the future for outreach and providing and promoting the libraries for other companies, other institutes. And thank you for this thing.
Thank you very much. Do any of the trustees have questions? Of those sixty book bags that you have for book clubs, how many of those are used right now?
I have to get the circulation information, but they are going very fast. And they are very interesting. Monthly, we add one bag. So we replace and add one bag. For now, we are just sixty bags. And every month, we've been, the old one that is not checked out for two, three years because it's been red and it's a new. So we are replacing a new one and we are adding a new title to them in the bag and letting everyone know that we do have a new bag. And it's nice that when I send out the email, I receive a request that can I have it on hold? And we try to change the policy for book club in fact, because in the past, they were not able to put it on hold. But we changed it to easier, we made it easier. So they are able to put it on hold. So they are able to hold the bag and they check that out. They are very happy with that. We had good feedback. We request this, I send them to form for suggestions. If I have any suggestions to see to add more titles to the bag. And on the desk, it's my chance on the desk, I ask the people who are on the desk, I ask them, what kind of book would you like, what genre would you like, what? And they let me know what it is. And I get more familiar with it in the meantime, I'm able to add their bags to it. And you are rebranding that and they are happy with it.
Excuse me, are you working with anybody at the Chamber of Commerce?
No.
Okay, I'll set you up with that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You said that we have three book clubs where people actually come to the library, two plus the other was a digital. How many people would be involved in that?
For English book club, we usually have between fifteen to twenty. It depends on the month, depending on the day. Sometimes we hit in summer, there are less than fifty, sometimes it's more than eighty. So for English, for Spanish, we, the same difference. And I will give you the correct information for you, but it's around ten. But I will give you the exact numbers. And we do have the graphic novel as well. I will give you the current information and the number of the participants who are in the book club.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you so very much for sharing this very enlightening, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, thank you, it was a pleasure and thank you for the feedback.
Okay, so next, okay, next is Gabe. Gabe's going to talk about some of our fun outreach projects.
I'm Gabriel Diaz of the Digital Services Association. Just jumping over Katie real quick because I have to get to an outreach, actually, in like ten minutes. So I'll go over some of the outreach that's been primarily focused on technology. Should I show off the list at that point? Yeah, so some of the primary ones have been working with the STEM ecosystem, which is a San Diego countywide system that kind of connects people in different STEM and STEAM learning environments. We've used that to create outreach at some of the high schools and elementary schools teaching STEM principles. We've also, I was sort of taking this on our VR to the senior living centers. I'm heading up today in about ten minutes to FELSC to do VR for the seniors that live there. We're also partnering with Delago Academy, which is one of the high schools. We've done the VR there. I've gotten internships from there that I've learned my job at the library. And then I've also worked with Outreach there and including our, getting library cards to all of their students there. Currently, we're a pilot program with that. We've done it during their IPEN training. So every student that came into the library and also had the option to get a library card at that time. We're hoping that, we probably will do it because of the implementation of Polaris into the next years to start including it in their registration packets so that every student hopefully have a library card. Once we get footing of that, we can start putting it to all of the schools. It's clear as you can see, that has the high school separated from the elementary school, but hopefully most bits and traction will keep moving there. Beyond that, I'm doing internal training on staff, learning some of the, that we have for kind of a major space. So that's the syllable cameos, VR, 3D printing, and Raspberry Pis, whatever kind of gear we have that seems agree before our patron base. I've also attended a couple of different professional developments. I just recently came back from the MIRA conference, which was the major space innovation and research mechanics. That was a really good approach for how to create a major space, but also allow it to be sustainable, which is what we're looking for at right now. Katie and myself have been working on what our policies will look like and how we will keep running a little major space library. I mean, that's kind of the, I guess, over, maybe some of the questionings, you're going to be like to get more clarification on, it's kind of an ambiguous aspect.
Oh, well, Gabe, I got to say, I really enjoyed the VR demo.
Yeah.
Okay. And I talked this up at the Chamber of Commerce and I, I'll talk it up here too. I'd love to see that at the Grand Avenue Festival. We can provide the electricity in the space. Grand Avenue Festival, the third Sunday every May and October. I think you'll have a line all day long wanting to do that.
The exciting news is we actually just recently, the library picked up an Oculus Quest, which is a wireless headset that runs most of the things that are ready, which is what you use, have a little on it. So we actually have the option to just bring that along. It doesn't have to be tethered or have a lot of power supply going on. So we're kind of looking at options we can do about it.
Are there other questions for Gabe? Gabe, thank you very much, we appreciate what you're, all you're doing.
So I'm Katie Perry, I am a senior librarian over technology and support services. And that division in the library is kind of interesting in that it's kind of encompassing through different departments. I oversee the customer service department, which is your check-in, check-out. That's the most kind of running that day-to-day in the library for most of the, like, our patrons to check out. And then also the technology services, who's basically Gabe and myself. And then our cataloging and acquisitions department, which has two employees. With the transition to Polaris, there's a lot of changes that are happening with what they're doing. And we are having a lot of fun cleaning up our databases, so that's fun. So I just kind of want to go over very quickly what the Polaris transition is going to look like for you guys, in case you're curious. And then I took a look at the strategic plan breakdown we have. And I just kind of made some notes as to how some of what we are doing in my department relates to those bullet points. So I might go over that. If you have questions, please stop me or I can email you my sheet as well. So first of all, our Polaris implementation. Polaris is the integrated library system. It is the software that basically runs our library. It tracks, it has all of our patron data, it has all of our catalog records for books and other items. It tracks the fines, fees, overdoses, all of that kind of stuff. We currently use a product called Sierra. Our Sierra contract was up in July. And instead of renewing it, we decided to take advantage of LSS's wonderful contract with Polaris, which is a much better program. And we are getting the full service treatment for that. We're very excited because it's a really good system. That will be, we've already started the training server. I thought everybody logged in with their passwords except for two people, which I'll be getting to tomorrow. We have closure on Tuesday of next week where our team from LSS corporate will be onsite. They will be onsite the entire month of August for implementation. But they'll be here starting Monday because we are doing staff training on Tuesday on the new system. So we'll be doing staff training on Tuesday. A couple of things that do kind of affect our patrons. I don't know that you are members or users of the San Diego Public Library System, but very strangely coincidentally, they are also moving to Polaris and they are about two weeks ahead of us. So if any of you are members of their library, they have lovely notices on their social media and website, which I'm going to be pleasantly adjusting to our needs, which is that we will have a period of time, about two weeks, where patrons will not be able to place holds or pick them up, just because that will be the time where we are transitioning our system entirely. So I will be putting this on the website and will go out in the e-newsletter for August. But from August eighth through our go-live date, August twenty-second, patrons will not be able to place holds. If they placed holds prior to that, they've come in, they can pick them up, but they will not be able to place holds from the eighth through the twenty-second. Our go-live date, as I said, is the twenty-second. That is the day we will be officially transferred over to Polaris. That gives us the entire, pretty much first three weeks of August for staff to become comfortable to train, for us to work out any translation issues between the two systems and all of that kind of fun stuff. So August will be very, very busy. But I'm really excited for this opportunity. And I think that it's going to streamline a lot of our processes and it's going to help a lot. I've got a preview of what the catalog is going to look like and it looks really nice. Something that you guys might find fun and interesting is you can authenticate your databases through the catalog. So instead of having a patron have to enter their card every single different database that they want to access, they can just do it once through the catalog and then access all the databases through the catalog from home. So that is an awesome offering, which we have now, but we're going to get, so I'm excited. So Polaris is pretty much my biggest project at the moment. I will go over now some of this strategic plan. So Gabe's already spoken to this, but you have on there, provide quality literacy and STEAM programs. We're doing that with the STEAM STEM nights and the implementation that Gabe's doing. We do a lot of partnering with the San Diego Children's Discovery Museum. They have a STEM night and we participate in that with the services as well. We provide programs out in the community, not just in the library, that's another bullet point. Gabe is doing that at the senior living facilities and half of the high schools. Now, raising public awareness through enhanced marketing. So previously, I also oversaw graphics and marketing. And we've just transitioned that to go directly under Era, which is really awesome. It's going to, once again, streamline things, make things a little bit quicker. But I did want to say that we have started our rebrand that will be happening in the next couple of months. And we actually won the California Library Association Marketing Award for print for our Boos and Booths program last year, so that's really cool. We won it last year, our first year winning for the Read Local Shop Local brochure. So we have two over. So we have two overarching programs for marketing. I just wanted to, yay. So our marketing is really good and we're working on all kinds of cool new things that we're doing. So it's really exciting to have for that. So on my list again, support education through partnerships with local schools. Gabe is doing that right now with Delago Academy especially. We did a really awesome, how many weeks was that internship program?
Six weeks and then we'll also be doing a theater one, which will be longer.
Right, so we did one for the juniors. They, the focus of the school is very cover-based and so they do a six-week internship program with their juniors. And they came, we had four, like four interns that entered with Gabe for six weeks and it was a fantastic program. They learned a lot, they helped us with a lot of projects. So we've started making some really good connections with the local schools and like Gabe said, we've gone out, we did a library press sign-up with Polaris. That's actually going to be a lot easier, so we're hoping to do that a lot more often. Maybe at one of the Cruisin' Grands or the Grand Avenue Festival, probably first a couple hours because doing that all day is a little difficult for staff. But there's a lot of cool applications we can now do because of the system, including the educational partnerships. Supporting initiative with expanded programming. We're obviously working on that with the maker spaces. We're going to be working on getting a set of quotes together for the equipment that we need and I'll present that to the Polaris Foundation and friends for funding because computers are pricey. But yeah, we're looking forward to being able to do a couple of different types of things with these computers. So we're trying to make them as basically multi-use as possible. We are working on additional power outlets is our idea. We've been working on, we recently moved the Spanish language collection because we've been shifting and really doing a lot of inventory on the stacks. We have a whole area now between the quiet area and the public computer area that we are looking to remove the shelving from and install more tables with more power outlets. That's something that patrons are always asking about. We purchased two tables that have outlets in the middle, including USB outlets and they're always in use. People love them. So we're trying to get more of those so that people can use their devices. Once again, as I mentioned earlier, we're a little limited in that our building is over 30 years old and there is only so many power outlets in the building and obviously we don't want to overload them. So being strategic about our placement and being able to provide that is, is on my agenda and it's a bit of a challenge, but working on that. Azar spoke to increasing our investment in ebooks and audiobooks. We definitely were part of a cooperative, so we share materials with other San Diego libraries. But we also do have our own accounts. We're able to purchase items just for our patrons as well. And so our ebooks and audiobooks is one of the things we're really focusing on this year. Additionally, we just changed, so part of the consortium is we had e-magazines through our digital. We just changed that to Flipster and it is a much better product. So we have a lot of new e-magazine titles. I think the interface is a lot better and we're going to be adding titles to that as well. If you guys like magazines, I recommend you check it out. It's pretty cool. I've linked on the homepage right now. Expanded virtual library, we've improved website. Polaris is taking care of some of this. Our catalog is going to be a lot more robust. It's going to be a lot easier for us to update. And in addition to that, it also is going to have integration with the products that I've gotten that will show people the next book in a series. It will allow people to tailor what they're looking for directly in the catalog instead of having to go out to another site. So that's going to be really cool. I'm excited to see how that looks. And we are, we do have plans to improve and change our website. There's a lot of things we're having to wait on for the city and they've just upgraded some servers and things like that. So it's kind of one of those things where I'm back and forth with our IT department. But that is something that's kind of a long-term plan and it's going to take a lot of really strategic like sit downs to get where we want it for me to start from. But that is on my list, but it might be a longer term goal. Yeah, like I said, I just kind of died on this and I'm like, oh, these are the things you're doing. So stop me. Analyzing collection performance and weeding is appropriate. That's a huge one. So Greg Hall, who's on my collection or my cataloging and acquisitions people, he is really good with analyzing the collection. He's doing a full one-by-one book inventory and cleaning up the catalog in preparation for this, but also in general. He's also been weeding and cleaning like crazy. He's very knowledgeable about circulation rates. We have certain standards we go by as to when we get rid of books or when we keep books, et cetera. And so he's been doing really well with that and we're including more of the clearance stuff. And that as well, we kind of reconceptualize with this 80/20 stuff. But we're also getting a tool because we have Polaris and because LSNS is piloting it called Collection IQ, which is a great analytical tool, which will allow us to really look at trends over time, different areas that are circling. All that data is pulled directly out of Polaris for us. I'm really excited to learn more about it, but it will help us as far as ordering. It will help us as far as those whole ratios. It will help us to figure out weeding and things like that. So it's something that we're definitely working on. Supporting staff competency through training and tools. Azar talked a lot about that. We've really been working on training our staff so that they're comfortable with the tools we offer to patrons so that they can then in turn train the patrons. So providing more databases training, providing the training especially on our new camera system that we recently got for security to other staff members so that we can all help everyone out with that. Additionally, obviously I'm training everyone on Polaris and the new systems. So that's always on the goal is providing staff training. Accessing mobile, print from mobile devices. So that's a really big project that's actually on my agenda for winter, spring of 2020. We've looked many different times at replacing and updating the print management system because currently we must be on one of the wired computers to print. Wireless printing is definitely one of the things we're looking to do. And it's one of those things that will need our P-type of things from the city. So I'm getting together all of the list of what we want so that we can start rolling with that. But we're not waiting till after Polaris is out there before we really focus on that. And removing the fees to check out these books on CD. So we got the official order about books on CD, right? Yes, we did. So I sent the official email to staff today that we will no longer be charging for books on CD and I was able to work with our system for self-checkouts and it is now removed. So if you go into the library today and you check out a book on CD, you will not be charged for it. Thank you for giving that. And that's kind of where I have, just kind of went through your guys' list and just marched over them. So that's what I got.
Great, I appreciate the update. Thank you.
I don't know when you sleep.
I don't, I have two children, I'll sleep.
You, you're invaluable to this library and we're very, very thankful to have you here and to have you explain to us all the things we're involved in. Polaris sounds very exciting. I mean, I'm really happy about that.
I am too. I'm really excited. And also Vera used it at her former library and she really likes it and is familiar with it. So Gabe, he had to go to the outreach, but he also used it. We have four staff members who've used it at various libraries. So it's kind of nice to have that mix of people who are, have that understanding and people who are coming in and do to it. I'm just, there's just a lot of great, like John, I'm a bit of a numbers person and there's just a lot of great analytics we can pull from Polaris and automatically generate reports that I don't even have to run myself, but I just get. So I'm excited about those kind of aspects of it, but I do, I think overall it's just, it's going to be a better system for sure.
Do any trustees have any other questions of Katie?
No, I don't have any questions. I've been on the board a number of years and this has been one of the most productive meetings as trustee to hear what's going on. There's no way that I can, as I walk around the building, know that all these fantastic programs are going on. I want to thank you for having the staff here to help educate us. Not only are the things you're doing impressive, but the fact that we're beginning to know, at least I'm beginning to know, a heck of a lot more of the things we're doing is, thank you.
Thank you for having us. We enjoy attending and we love to share what we're doing. I had a good time showing Carolyn around. So if you guys, anyone wants to tour and if anyone wants to do VR, Gabe is more than happy to set that up. I did want to mention that we are actively getting public 3D printing available in the fall. So if anyone has something they want 3D printed and they have a design for it, we are going to be rolling that out in the fall of this year. So we're trying really hard with this technology being rolled, but anything you guys need from us, those two?
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Vera. Do you have anything else in the library report?
Somewhat free, I'll keep it to the points that are priorities right now. First off is marketing. We, there was a logo created in 2016 or '17 and with the turnover, it just kind of got swept aside. So we're kind of, we're going in, we're revisiting that. Just if you look at our calendar or new record now, we currently have our logo list. But we have a very talented graphic designer that distracts you and you don't notice. So we're trying to revisit that and see if we're just going to revitalize it, bring it back. So that's one thing we're working on, we're going to remember in the library, especially when Gabe, Katie, Azar, anyone is going out to the community, making people, it looks like our people start identifying that logo. So that's one thing we're working on. I think Gabe, more than ever, outreach today. There's more to come next month. I would like to have youth services come and talk to you about some of the shared outreach programs they have. And I'd also like to touch on, actually, who we second talked about, our bilingual book club. So we have a bilingual book club that typically has anywhere from eight to 12 of the attendees and that's on a Sunday afternoon. There's a toddler tales storytime, which is presented in both English and Spanish as well. And for our literacy department, they were also very active. We are in a separate building, we're a very active part of our summer reading challenge. And they had some programs like a bingo card challenge, a writing boot camp and conversational craft classes, all of which you receive prizes for, prizes for as a reading different reading benchmarks. So and it's great that they have that there because it's a slightly leaning program because they read levels are different than some of the others in the main library. And another priority, safety and security is ongoing. We mentioned we've got a new camera, I think. As part of Oculus, we have a new camera, so staff will be getting trained. So we'll continue on with that. So that, as I'm going by what we discussed last time, that's kind of my presentation of what we've been doing. I've given you an early version of the August calendar, which shows you some of the events we have coming on August. It's a little sparse because August is kind of our February month. Between some of the new program and the first full stars. But there's still some of our regular programming going on. So I would like to kind of move forward with this format and see if it works. At least on my level.
Thank you very much. I also like the format. Okay, having the staff come and tell us what they're doing is great.
One thing I want to speak about before we adjourn, every one of you can put items on the agenda at any time. The one thing that I would ask, which would help all of us, I would like to make sure if you put an item on that has some kind of a document accompanying it, that we get those to the, all the trustees with the agenda. Because that way, when they get to the meeting, they're prepared and you've seen the document and people aren't reading. And so if you, Vera, how much, how much lead time would you like to have before a meeting, which would be somewhat the deadline that people could get their agenda requests in with backup documents?
Ideally, well, it goes out to you all, the weeks before.
Right.
So at least three days prior to that.
Why don't we say a week prior? So that would be two weeks. It's easy to remember that. So it would be two weeks prior to the meeting. And if we have any kind of emergency things, obviously, this isn't cast in concrete. But if you have an item you want on the agenda, please let Vera know. And if you have some backup document, documentation that you'd like to have, if you'd also get that to her, that way when you get your agenda package, you'll have everything that all of us have and you'll be prepared when you come here.
And I just wanted to speak to that.
Yes.
Also, I may have made a mistake. So I shared the 80/20 blog with John because he specifically asked me about that. So perhaps I should have shared that with you, but then I get confused about what's violating like all the discussion.
The Brown Act?
Yes.
You can share that stuff with us.
So I can?
To that extent, so yes, when you, if you share any information with one member, it should go to all of them. Similar with the city council. If a council member requests one item, we give it to everyone. So in the future, I would recommend saying to everyone.
And can I send it to them all at once or does it have to be one?
It can be sent to all of us.
Oh, we just can't.
Yeah, just don't reply all and then begin a discussion based off of that, but everyone can receive that information. Yeah.
Are you excited, maybe I'm still on the learning curve?
No, no, well, that's, it's good to get these things clarified because they're complicated and then the Brown Act is somewhat complicated. And so Zach's our expert and we appreciate him being here. Thank you. Is there anything else that anyone would like to bring forward?
I just have one question on the monthly stats. I'm looking at total wireless sessions. Yeah.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
The technical thing is, I guess it's out of whack.
No, it's not. Okay, so here's what, I put notes on the bottom of the Excel sheet, but when I translated the Excel sheet into the Word document, I think my notes dropped off and I apologize. So in the end of May, we got completely updated and revamped wireless network and it is fantastic. However, when I was taking wireless stats, excuse me. Previously, I was using an algorithm that was created by my predecessor that, because we got all the numbers, but it didn't account for duplication. So for example, I don't know how familiar you guys are with wireless, but if you walk into a building with your phone, say, and your wireless turned on, when you're on access point one, it shows you as one person. Even though you have the same number, like attached to your phone, you go to wireless access point two, you're in a different part of the building, it should count you as that same person. But the old system didn't distinguish. It just said one person, you're a second person, you're a third person, not every single one. So he had created an algorithm that he thought would estimate removing those duplicates, which is how I gave the stats previously to that time. However, the new system is smart and it will remove duplicate people. So looking at the numbers previous to the new system, it's obvious that his algorithm definitely was still overcounting because what we're getting now is completely accurate. If you go from one access point to another, it still counts you as the same person, which is what it should be doing.
Okay, so we have a new baseline?
We have a new baseline.
Okay.
The long, the long story.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
If I understood, as a person walks through the door, are you recording?
Yes.
Now, some of us, not all of us, but some of us walk through that door three or four times a day. Is we are recorded four times? Or will this system eliminate that?
Okay, so the way that the, the way that the gate counters work, okay, the way that the, what I report to you is an average of both in and outs. It's not the exact number because the exact number would count you coming in as one person and you going out as a second person and you coming back in as a third person and you going out as a fourth person, which to me is extremely exponential. So what I do is I take the number of ins and the number of outs and I divide them by two because I assume that that's one person walking in and out. So if you walk in and out of the building three times, it will count you as three people. It will not count you as six people, which is what the raw data is that I synthesized, if that makes any sense.
So if I come in rather go in front or I'll come in the side door?
Yes. If you would like to make my statistics more accurate, don't use the front two doors. Use the staff entrances. Yes.
I don't think that just, Ellen, we're coming in and out is going to throw all the numbers out of whack. So we should be fine with that.
Katie, one question that I do have with regard particularly to print. If we have a major weeding process going on, will you, will you notify us so that if it affects the print, we have a little idea of why it's being affected?
So I can do that for sure. What you get? So I can do that for sure. What you get though is only circulation. I'm not giving you actual holding numbers.
Okay.
I can provide, I usually provide that on the annual report because I provide that to the California State Library, what our current holdings are. And I actually, this year, thought forward and I took a snapshot on the last day of the fiscal year. So I can show you what those holdings are for that.
But once a year is fine.
Yeah. So that's going to be more accurate as to what our holdings are now versus what our holdings are this time next year. However, it's probably going to still be pretty similar because even though we may weed like 20,000 items, we're probably going to add 20,000 items. So there is a way for me, at least with Sierra, to track adds and deletes. So you can actually kind of take a look at how much we're getting rid of in a month and how much we're adding in a month. I'm sure that Polaris has similar analytics. So if that is something you'd like to see quarterly or even half, every half a year, I can definitely provide that for you.
Just once in a while so that we, we don't get confused.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other items for the body?
I just wanted to real quick say thank you for including the calendar in the, in the package. And I have a question. Could we get that calendar by email at the beginning of the month? Like for example, next month's meeting is going to be on the 15th.
Do we send out the calendar as part of the email or is it just?
So the, okay, so the calendar, we try and have the calendar completed by the fifteenth, between the 15th and the 20th of the month before. And it is then printed and available. I also do post PDF version on the website. I can easily, as soon as I have the official PDF, we can just email that to you guys. I think this year, this month, it was done on the 20th.
Maybe along with the proposed agenda for, for a meeting, which is going to be in the beginning of the month anyway.
Yeah, that's perfect because I like to include it just as a long.
Yeah, exactly. Make it easy for you. Thank you.
So next month, just to review, I'm going to have the fines and fees. And because I knew providing the statistics from two months prior, just because of that, I'm going to just, to make it not confusing, I'm going to put whatever the fines and fees for that month are. And then if you are interested in the book club and the bag circulation statistics, I can pull that for you. So just for interest.
Thank you, Katie. Any other items? Go to the order. Gabe, we need a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? It's been moved by Schwab, seconded by Clemens to adjourn. Vote?
Motion approved five zero.
Thank you very much.
But we had several years, a year prior to when I was there, when no one activated the, the items on the shelves that hadn't been on the shelf or something. So over the last three years, you've been kind of going through and trying to get rid of this stuff. So we were able to make space and also to, because we had some magazines around. So you just moved the Spanish.